Good morning. This is June 26, 2017, regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court meeting. And if we're recording, we'll get to start where we're recording. All right. We'll start with the invocation followed by the pledge. Commissioner Sanchez.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to give you thanks and praise this morning, Lord. We thank you for the rain that you sent towards us last night, Lord. We just ask that you may continue to bless us. Yes, that you may bless this county, bless all of our employees, all those who are visiting today, Lord. We just ask that you may send your Holy Spirit to give us wisdom and understanding as we conduct the county's business today. We pray for our military men and women around the world. We pray for their safety, Lord. We just ask that you may be with them. And we thank you for our friendships here, Lord, and that we may continue to do your work here in Midland County. And we ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's believe in Jesus through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Good morning and a nice summer refresh day. And item number three, which is the impact recognition, we're going to table. There was a death in that family and they are not with us today. So number four, acknowledge new executive director, Lee Ortega, of the Museum of the Southwest. Commissioner Prude.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah. Good morning.
So we have a multiple introduction deal. I'd like the court to know, one of the most enjoyable positions that I've ever been assigned to was getting to serve with the Museum of the Southwest. And we have a long history, which I won't go into right now, but it was kind of rocky for a while. And then now it's back online. However, we had to start over from scratch about five or six or seven years ago now with a new director. And there was lots of stuff going on in the newspapers. It wasn't pleasant. And with a whole new staff. Well, anyway, this lady here, Jamie Alexander, in case y'all don't know her, was kind of put in charge, was made the head. Well, the Board of Governors, which is made up of all the rich ladies in town, one way, all the really important people in town, were mad because they thought, they thought the Board of Governors, of which I am a part now and Jamie was, was to blame. So she had to put together a new staff and a new director and all the time being, people being mad at her. So anyway, I'm so proud of Jamie. So what I'm going to let her do is introduce then, because she wouldn't have bragged on herself like I did. That's the kind I wanted to be up here. And then she'll introduce our new director, talk about how we came up with it. And then our new director will then talk about our future plans. So take it away.
Good morning.
So I'm pretty sure Randy was more than generous. Thank you. We, just a little background, I moved here in 2007 and the museum is my heart and soul. So if you don't go there, you should. We have plenty to offer. It's been an honor and a privilege to be affiliated with the museum. Helped chair the first search committee for our previous executive director. He moved in December and so we started a new search. And we were very fortunate to have a lot of qualified applicants, but we had one person, actually, that had to be recruited. She wasn't looking, which is the best kind of person. Go after someone that you know has the treasure and the talent and to pursue them, which we did. And we were fortunate enough to get Lee to say yes. And we hired her at the end of April and she moved here last week, just in time for some storms to take down trees at the museum. But she's done all that with grace and we recruited her from the Regional Art Museum in Fort Smith, Arkansas. But I'll let her tell you a little bit more about herself.
Before you step away, thanks for all you did in the interim, because that wasn't easy.
Thank you.
So, good morning, Lee.
Good morning. Thank you for that lovely introduction. Jamie is wonderful. I definitely have really enjoyed my experience with her and everyone at the Museum of the Southwest. And I've had such a warm welcome to Midland. This is really an exceptional, friendly place. I was recruited from Fort Smith, Arkansas. A little bit about myself, I've been in the art world for about 20 years, over 20 years. I have a background in museums as well as for-profit art galleries. And I also worked for an art college as well. So I have a pretty well-rounded background. Fort Smith, Arkansas, I was recruited there to open the very first art museum. They did not have an art museum in Fort Smith, Arkansas. So I was recruited there in 2011, went through the entire design process for the new facility. It was a 16,000 square foot facility. And I had been there for over six years. I wasn't planning on staying that long, but that's, that's how it wound up. And that's one of the reasons why this position was so interesting to me, was the fact that there's a big renovation project. Actually, there's two in our future. I'm very much looking forward to the children's museum renovation project. Those of you who don't know anything about it, you'll hear about it very, very soon because we're going to be forming focus groups around the community and getting public opinion on what everyone, how everyone envisions their children's museum. Because our job is to serve the public. So to get it right is very, very important. And we certainly don't want to approach funders and different potential supporters without a clear vision of what the community wants. So that's really the first thing on my list. And, you know, this, this facility is so, it's in dire need of renovation. Right now, I believe a third of the building is completely unusable. There are roof issues, there are hazards to the public. Actually, we had to close off two sections of, of the children's museum. So it's, it's, it's a legitimate need. And so I really look forward to digging into that and, and working on that project in the very near future.
Cool.
Lee, I will mention, one of the things that we're looking at in the, I don't know if it'll come true or not, is a really, really neat water aquarium type thing. I don't know if it'll come true or not from your focus groups, but a lot of people in Midland have asked for a really fun thing for children to look at that has to do with touching sea life and aquariums. So I may be kind of setting a jinx on this thing. But anyway, I'm looking forward to that. And I'll also mention to you and to the court, or help the court remember, that our library is nationally and internationally award-winning.
Yes.
And we've had some great partnerships with the museum in the past few years. And I look forward to maybe us doing something else together in the near future with a joint exhibition of some sort.
Yes, absolutely. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to partnering with other nonprofits in the community. That's something else that I was very active with in Fort Smith, Arkansas. It's really the best way to connect our facility and our audience with other audiences. And I've found in my experience that partnering with other nonprofits is always a win-win. I never looked at it like competition. I feel like nonprofits have to help each other because in the end, our sole purpose is to serve the public. So it's really all about the visitors and their experience.
As long as we're doing free advertising, the Summer Lawn Concert Series is on right now. How many of you in this audience have had a chance to go to a summer concert? Aren't those fabulous? I mean, what did, what did it mean?
There really are.
Last night, we must have had 17 or 1800 or what? Do you know the number yet?
Well, we have always over 1,000. I think last week it was almost 1,100. And this, yesterday, there were a lot more. I haven't seen the count yet, but I was, well, it must have been 1,500, 1,600.
So for those of you who have kids and grandkids, I mean, everybody brings their dogs and their blankets and their picnic lunches. And it's just a beautiful community event. So come if you have never been to one and they're free. And it's just a, it's just a-
They start at 7:30, but come get your spot a little bit early because people do show up early.
I won't tell people how early we come because we have a favorite spot.
Lee, you've told us about your education and your professional career, but where's home? Where are you from originally?
Well, I grew up in Kenosha, Wisconsin. My mom is originally from Columbus, Ohio. My dad's from southern Spain. And so my dad was a professor at the University of Wisconsin-Parkside, which is what brought us there for the majority of my life. And then my folks took early retirement and moved back to my dad's hometown in Granada. So that's where they are now and all of my dad's family is there. And so since that time, I've really just, you know, I've moved quite a bit around with my, you know, due to my work. It's just the nature of my work. But I did start off my career in Buffalo, New York, and I worked for the Albright Knox Museum. And then from there, I went to New York City and I directed an art gallery. And I spent a couple of years in Savannah, Georgia. I was Director of Exhibitions for the Savannah College of Art and Design. And then I was Director of Marketing and PR for the Bass Museum in Miami Beach. And then I was the ED for the Fort Smith Regional Art Museum. So I've, I've kind of done this semi-circle around the country, but I do, I prefer the South because it was just, you know, growing up as a, it was just too cold in Wisconsin. So I feel for the state of the South.
You certainly have improved your temperature every day.
So much better. The hotter, the better. That's what I say.
Yeah, but you'll find most, any day of the week, you've got a question about our community, there's somebody in the county ready to help and talk to you about it. So use us as a resource.
I certainly will.
Good to have you here.
Well, it's great to be here. Thank you so much for the warm welcome.
Thanks, Randy, for doing all that.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Let's, for the record, is there a motion to acknowledge her arrival?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number five, discuss take action on court minutes from June 12, 2017. They're in your pocket.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, we have a series of hearings and so there's no confusion by anybody. We're going to call each one of these hearings individually and then we'll act upon that hearing item. And that way, we can keep it clear for the public and the media. Item number six, conduct a public hearing on three-way stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1192. That public hearing is open now. By my watch, it's 9:14. Anyone wishing to talk on that subject, please come forward. Second call, anybody wishing to talk on the three-way stop sign at County Road 125 and 1192, second call. Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on County Road 125 and County Road 1192 at intersection three-way stop, please come forward. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed, 9:15. Number seven, discuss take action on three-way stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1192. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, sir. Judge, I'd like to make a motion to put up a three-way stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1192.
Okay. Commissioner, this is an extension of what we heard from citizens last couple of courts, is that right?
That is right. This is that road where we talked about having to put up some three-way stop signs because of the traffic, how small that road is, and also some of the speeding that's occurring on that road. And so this was our solution to that. And that's what the three hearings are about.
All right.
And Louise, it is three-way rather than four-way just because there is no fourth?
That's correct. There is not a fourth way. It kind of dead ends from, from 1192, it dead ends into 125. And that's what, what's happening to all the intersections. That's why it's a three-way, not a four-way.
And I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, we have the second version of this. Conduct a public hearing on three-way stop signs at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1195. That hearing is now open. It's 9:16 by my watch. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on that, please do. Second call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on County Road 125 and County Road 1195, three-way intersection sign being proposed. Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak at County Road in the intersection of 125 and County Road 1195 for a three-way stop sign. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed, 9:17 by my watch. Number nine, discuss take action on three-way stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1195. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, sir, Judge. I'd like to make a motion to put a three-way stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1195.
All right, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 10, conduct public hearing through a stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1198. That public hearing is now open and it's 9:17 by my watch. And anyone wishing to speak on a three-way stop sign to be placed at County Road 125 and County Road 1198, please come forward and speak at this time. Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on the three-way stop sign being proposed for County Road 125 and the intersection of County Road 1198, please come forward. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Next item is 11, discuss take action on three-way stop signs at the intersection of County Road 125 and 1198. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, sir, Judge. I'd like to make a motion to place this three-way stop sign at the intersection of County Road 125 and County Road 1198.
All right. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And Commissioner, this completes the first safety improvement there. We might be seeing some more, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. I'd like to call Felipe up here real quick, just so we can kind of go over what we were going to do. I know we were planning on putting up a three-way stop sign. And Felipe had also suggested some rumble strips.
Okay, Felipe, what did you add?
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
Yes, I suggested to Louise, we start off with this three-way stop signs and then from there proceed to some rumble strips to try to slow down traffic.
Is this after you measure the effect of the three-way stop?
Yes, sir.
And the height of the strips you're proposing? Are they large ones or little?
No, it's going to be the regular size. They're about one inch.
Okay. Any questions from the court?
Thanks, Felipe.
Thank you.
Just make it safe, keep the cars out of those people's yards.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys for being here.
Item 12, discuss take action, ratifying appointment. Patricia Nelson to the Permian Basin Community Center's Board of Trustees. This was an appointment that came up in between. It didn't make it for our last agenda in time and they needed this appointment. You have on item 12, you have the resume. It's a very impressive resume. So they're asking us to please ratify her service appointment. Are there questions?
I move that we ratify the appointment of Patricia Nelson to the Permian Basin Community Center's Board of Trustees.
Okay. Is there a second? Have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 13, drum roll. And trust me, I think you're going to like this one. Received presentation from Weaver on 2016 Midland County audited financial statements. Mr. David DeRee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, members of the court, it's always a pleasure and honor to serve the county and to make a quick presentation of the final. This is the, you should have in front of you the copies, the greenback copies of the final release document for September 30, 2016. And as, as normal, we have a, a quick presentation. And I think you've got a copy of the presentation, hard copy as well. What the judge is referring to is that middle paragraph there that talks about an unmodified opinion. In the past, the county has, last year, we implemented Gadsby 68 and we recorded the retirement, TC DRS retirement liability. This year, and for several years, we haven't, there's been a departure in our opinion that said that we didn't record OPEB, other post-employment benefits. This year, we recorded that liability. So the county's opinion is completely unmodified. There are no departures, no exceptions to the opinion. So it's a clean opinion. I'd also point out that this year, we had a, a single audit, the state audit, the grant dollars, you call it certs, Commissioner, or cert, ceters?
Ceters.
Cedars, right? So it's the state dollars. Those state dollars rose to the level that we did a single audit on those state dollars. And there's a report in the back of the audit binder that shows that that was audited and no findings on that, no material weaknesses, no non-compliance. So all the opinions are as clean as they can be. And the rest of the presentation is really just some general fund highlights. I need to thank the, before we go there, I probably need to thank the County Auditor's Office, most of the heavy lifting. You know, there's a lot of information that comes to the court on a monthly basis. Well, at the end of the year, that monthly information just continues to accumulate and just a lot of heavy lifting that happens at the County Auditor's Office and the other departments. And so need to thank them for their time, the judge for his time in meeting with us and going through the detail and all of the, all of the departments for their role in the audit. So if I did this very quickly, that first page is general fund assets. You can see a, it's a five-year comparison. You can see a little bit of an increase in, in cash and investments. It's really just timing. As you go through the rest of the balance sheet, you'll see cash and investments up and accounts payable down. Other assets is about 3.9 million. Due to's and due froms, there's a lot of activity between, between funds in accordance with your budget. The general fund liabilities may be on the next page. Not a lot happening here. Payables is up a little bit. Again, cash was up a little bit, payables up a little bit. A lot of that is timing. The other deferred outflows and other liabilities, you see increases and decreases. And I was looking, that orange from four years ago, I don't remember honestly what that big, big bump was from four years ago, but from last year to this year, a couple million dollars again is just, just timing, nothing really to be, to point out. So the general fund balance, again, the general funds are the primary operating fund. You've got the non-spendable category a little bit over there. That's just a representation of what's in inventory. The restricted or those outside restrictions, those grant dollars, a little bit in, in both of those. So the assigned and the unassigned. The assigned had a decrease and in the past, we've had more in our capital improvements category that the, that the court has assigned dollars to. So there was a little bit of a decrease. You can see from 34 million down to 17 million what's left at the end of the day at 9:3016 in that 17 million. It's about 15 million in the capital improvements assignment and about 2 million of compensated absences. So with that decrease, there looks like there's a big increase in the unassigned, and there absolutely is, from the 33 million to the 47 million. And that's even with, as we go through the rest of this, there was a, there was actually a decrease in revenues over expenditures. There was more expenditures in the general fund, including transfers out than revenue. So if everything had stayed level, this unassigned would have come down. But with that reclassification, with that assignment reducing, it made, made it look like the unassigned increased. That may be easier to see as I go through this. So budget to actual, I know that y'all operate very, very tightly on a budget and you can see for 9:3016 in the general fund, the final budget, and y'all do adjust your budget throughout the year, but the final budget was 68 million. Our actual numbers were 73 million, so we're about 5 million more. So we had a conservative budget from a revenue standpoint. We actually came in more. Property taxes was more, the biggest piece of it, and charges for service were the larger pieces of that $5 million increase. So remember that 73 million, because over on the expense side, we've got, on the expenditure side, had a budget of 81 million, almost 82, spent 77, 76.9. I'm going to call that 77. So the 73 versus the 77 is, is a decrease. It's 73 in revenues, 77 expenses. So we actually reduced fund balance if it hadn't have been for that, for that reclassification. So 4.2 million is the number that I'm looking at that is budgeted expenses that we did not spend. So we've got a little bit more in revenues than we were hoping to get and, and spent a little bit less in expenditures than we were budgeting. If you look at that on a pie chart, and about the best we can get out of this is sales tax is 42% and property taxes, 40% of the revenues that come in to the 2016 general fund. Expenditure side of the, of the pie chart, we can see public safety at 31% and judicial is 21%. And the operating transfers, so, so within that budget, if I'd have gone back to the, let me see if I can make this happen. See that bottom line, that big number there, that's 16 million, 358? We budgeted 16 million, 7. So that's the transfers. And when you look at the expenditure side of that, that blue at the bottom, the operating transfers out, 21 million. So the general fund actually transferred out 21 million current year. Now, this fund balance analysis, looking at the last five years, you can see in the general fund, you know, it bounces around from 65 million to 70 million every other year. And at this year, we went from 69 million in our 2015 year to 65 million. So that's that 3-point something million that we were talking about of revenues, less revenues than expenditures, came down. So overall, fund balance comes down a few million dollars, even though the dark blue is the assigned and the light blue is the unassigned. So we've got more in the unassigned bucket, less in the assigned bucket, but overall, general fund came down a few million dollars. Bonded debt to assessed value, I think the assessed value was around 21 billion the year before, 22. So assessed value goes up and our debt at this level, bonded debt, is, was 17 million in the prior year, 16. So assessed value going up and, and debt going down with our payments gives us that drop from 0.08 in 2015 to 0.07 ratio. Debt per capita coming down from 116 in 2015 to the 110. Debt per capita over the last 10 years, you can see the high there in 2009 at 234, we're down to 110 in the current year. Quick one on property tax, started out in 2007 at 0.2488 and went from 1265, 0.1265 to 0.1408 from our 1516 year. Your property rates, general fund, capital assets. So on capital assets, bottom line shows that, what is that, 143, 143 million last year to 146 million in the current year. So it's up 3 million. But if you look up ahead, just above that, the accumulated depreciation was 65 million to 72 million. So we added $7 million of accumulated depreciation, right? That's the negative. That's the depreciation that we record in capital assets, not necessarily in the general fund, for the county itself, and I think this is government. 208 million was the total assets before depreciation and 218. So we increased assets. My point, finally, if I'll make it, is we increased assets by 10 million, depreciation of 7 million, and still had a net increase of the $3 million. Sales tax revenue with the reduction from 41 million in the prior year to 30 million, 790 in the current year. I think there was a bet on the sales tax too. Was it sales tax? Probably it's sales tax, maybe. Came in very close to what it was expected. Again, we're just honored to be able to serve the county and appreciate what this Commissioners' Court does and all the help that goes into the annual audit. And I'm here to answer any questions and always available for this court.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. DeRee?
Can you give me your, on your Gadsby 65?
68 on TC DRS on the retirement, right?
Can you give me the, kind of the way you figure that?
Oh, my goodness, yes. We ask an actuary to do the figuring.
That's an easy one to do.
Yeah. So they use lives, they use a ton of assumptions. And then those assumptions not only follow the people and the retirement and, and expected life expectancy, but then you've got assumptions, assumptions also on the liability side of it and on the investment side of it. And there's a great note, about seven pages long, in that financial statement that shows if those assumptions, just the discount piece of those assumptions, what we're expecting to happen on the investment side or what we're expecting to happen on the, on the liability side, just moved 1%. It's, it changes millions of dollars. So there's a ton of assumptions that go into play. We do get the experts to, to do the calculations for us and then the auditors come back behind, try to make sure those assumptions are in line with the industry and then roll it forward from, from one year to the next. Yeah. Is that close to what you're hoping for?
Yeah.
David, if I can take a moment, congratulate my colleagues first, who chose to embark[1679.14] on a rather expensive paving program a number of years ago for the county, which we just completed. And those assets were booked in, they're all in the house now, so to speak. We've got those in hand, and that softens any of these estimated fictitious suggestions that come with some of the Gatsby stuff. We wanted to have those in-house, and we do. But the two things that stand out, and Mitzi, let's talk about your office a moment. Y'all have done a wonderful job in investments. In a very slow market, you've improved our investment account by over $300,000, and that didn't go unnoticed. And then for all of you, all the clerks, the judges, particularly the collection department, law enforcement, we've done a much better job of our charges and collections, a couple of million dollars' worth. And I want to be sure we thank everybody for that, which is an ongoing, everyday action. And secondly, this is a result of a budget that we asked them to operate within a smaller amount of money, and they all did. So everybody has a hand in this, and we thank them. And I thank them very much, because your most vivid chart is the tax rate going down and pretty good financial position. So, and the second thing is the refinancing of the debt service, which that now appears to start taking hold, and we'll see that even improve because bond rates were going up and we're locked in on a low rate. Yes, ma'am?
Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Weaver for a great job that they do. We did have to do single audit this year, and there was a lot of more extensive testing that had to be done on our grants and just in general over all of our transactions. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the auditor's office, and if they could please stand for me.
Yeah.
You know, on a day-to-day, you know, they have to go out to the departments, making sure that all the approvals are there, making sure that things get coded correctly. We do have a clean audit, and it's because of their daily work, and I just wanted to acknowledge them for it.
You're right. Thank you. And kind of a note again on Gatsby, as we move forward, keep in mind what David just said when Robin asked the question about post-retirement and what have you. You'll see that as we work through the budgets. There'll be some opportunities coming in the retirement accounts that we'll have to think long and hard about, because they show a vivid, strong financial picture. But when you add these assumptions, and the assumptions change every day, particularly every year, when the state sends us our unfunded mandates, and then that result is, don't get lost in the conversation that says you can pay 100% of this amount and you're paid up in your retirement. You're not paid up until the actuary comes out the next time, and I guarantee you, you won't be paid up. So it's a moving target. But David, I agree. Thank you, and thanks to the audit department. Certainly let the leader of that group do the first thank you, but we'll follow it up from the court. We thank you very much for the accurate data we had.
Do you have one comment? David, on your general fund expenditures page, I believe the variance was reversed on your last line there of operating transfers out. It shows there's a negative 368 rather than positive, and I think that would make your total number rather than 4.2 up to 4.9 or so. Would you check that page and see if that was a typo or something?
You bet, you bet. So there was 16.7 million in expected transfers out?
Right.
And we actually transferred out 13, 16.3 million, so the 368, yeah.
And it should have been a positive number there rather than, so that would make that, that will increase your variance total. Makes it even look better, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Thank you, good.
Any other questions? David, thank you and your team. We certainly appreciate it. And a word on behalf of them, they were ready to go earlier as we had asked, and then lo and behold, we woke up and we were required to do a single audit, so we had to wait on that one to come. First time we've ever done that, but.
There's always moving parts that need coordinating. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Okay. 14. Discuss take action on 2016 Midland County audit and financial statements. I don't believe there's any extra conversation, but is there some motion to acknowledge it for the public?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second?
Okay. Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that motion, I trust, came with Randy suggested I would agree to.
Absolutely.
Suggested adjustment. Okay. All right. Let's go to 15. Discuss take action on court fees for the county and district clerk's office. Allison, good morning.
Good morning. I'd just like to present the May 2017 fees collected by the district clerk and the county clerk's office.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay.
Second?
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. 16. Discuss take action on funds for extension agent salary. Yes, ma'am.
Gentlemen, I was contacted by Rebel Royal, who is the district extension administrator, and he's been given permission to fill one of our positions out there, the agriculture and natural resources position. They are going to start filling positions by order of importance, and so this is the first one he asked to be able to fill. When they find a person, the person will not be able to start until September because of the hiring freeze, but they want to start looking. And in order to start looking, he needed a new letter of support from you guys stating how much we're willing to give for this position.
Okay. See, we provide our support, $15,000.
That's what he said, but when we did this letter last, I guess about six months ago, you guys did 12.5 and a vehicle for travel.
We do give them the vehicle, but the state always asks for the 15.
And he did.
Yeah, and he did again. So you want to leave at 12.5 or you want to go to 15?
I think we should just go to 15, so we can get that position filled.
All right. Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and we'll go to 15.
Hope they can find somebody. That's the kicker.
You and me both.
Yeah, they got so many openings. 17. Discuss take action on authorizing a county judge to sign the county support letter for Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Services.
This is just allowing the judge to sign the letter that states that you guys are giving 15 and a vehicle for this position.
I'd make the motion.
Second?
Motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 18. Acknowledge receipt of refund from Public Workers Compensation Program. Dwayne?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We did get, receive a check from Public Workers Compensation, a refund check this year for $47,960.92. That's from overpayments going in and lack of use, basically, of some of the funds. Kind of a little background to go with it, this is the sixth year that we've actually received a refund, and it's due to some of the programs we've got in place, like where we get free shoes to be able to give out to the workers, some of the workers that are out in the field, facilities, IT and road and bridge. Also has to do with the wellness, the participation within the wellness. So basically, our claims are down significantly and actually put us into a high performer status with the state.
And Dwayne, how's that check compared to last year's?
It's actually just a little bit less than last year's. We've been actually doing real good on those. But the second part of that is the contract to extend our inter-local agreement, the authorization on signing that. It's for a three-year extension at the same rate, no increase.
Okay, that's the next item.
Let me make a motion to acknowledge receipt of refund check from PWCP.
Second?
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, 19. Discuss take action on authorizing a county judge to sign their local agreement extension with PWCP.
This will give us a three-year extension on the inter-local agreement that we've had for the last, since 2008. It'll give us a three-year extension, no increase. The only difference is if we have more employees or not, but the rate increase per employee is exactly the same.
Questions on that? Discussions or motions?
If we're looking for that loss control program, this, that's referred to in that plan, do we come to you? Do you have that loss control program?
Yeah, you can get logins and stuff like that to be able to get into it. I can set them up.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, I would make the motion that we authorize county judge to sign the inter-local agreement extension to PWCP.
Okay.
Second?
Motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Item 20, we don't have that agreement yet. 10. So, discuss take action on authorizing a county judge to sign inter-local agreement between Midland County District Attorney's Office and Midland Community Supervision Department. We don't have an agreement.
Good morning, your honor, members of the court. We are having some difficulty locating the hard copy of the agreement.
Okay.
It's my understanding that Mr. Malam has approved that agreement, and it's just a matter of getting it to the court. I can let the court know what the issue is in the agreement. And first, let me extend Ms. Nodell's regrets for not being able to be here. She's retrieving her children from their vacation in Wisconsin, so we expect her to be back in the office tomorrow. But the DA's office is seeking to work with the Community Supervision and Corrections Department in order to help, let them help the Veterans Court participants who are also participating in our pre-trial intervention program. And as part of our pre-trial intervention program, we're statutorily authorized to collect a $500 fee to maintain the operations of PTI. In order for folks to also participate in the Veterans Court program, though, they also need to be supervised by the probation department. And previously, there was no way to compensate the probation department for their part to play with those individuals who were going through our PTI program, but also participating in Veterans Court. And with the good work they do in the Veterans Court program, we think it's very important to allow those individuals to have the benefits both of our pre-trial intervention and also of the Veterans Court program. So the agreement would merely transfer $300 of the $500 fee that we are authorized to collect by the statute for those individuals who are also going through the Veterans Court program in order to compensate the probation department for the role they play in supervising those individuals. Again, those who don't participate in the Veterans Court program are not involved with CSCD. But the individuals who are going through both programs at the same time, I feel like they get a great benefit from their ability to interact with the probation department. And so all this will do is authorize us to provide a portion of that fee to CSCD in order to compensate them for the work they do with our veterans who are going through the PTI program. And we'll certainly get that agreement to the court just as soon as we can get it located.
Okay. Russell, you've seen it, and you're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Any questions from the court?
I would make the motion that as soon as we find it, that we allow the county judge to sign the inter-local agreement between Midland County District Attorney's Office and the Midland Community Supervision Department with the notation that the Veterans Court is acknowledged in there.
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
Second?
Have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Anybody got any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your honor. Thank you, commissioners.
21. Acknowledge the tax collections from May 2017. Good morning, Ms. Hood.
Good morning. You have that information in front of you, and as Commissioner Sanchez requests, we have the 2016 comparison. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Karen, one question I do have. That refund replacement that is noted in there on your summation of fees, what is that supposed to be?
Show me what you're talking about.
On the second page of your deal, where your summary of all collections from May, at the bottom, it shows a refund replacement, the last line in there.
Maybe titles. Is that not titles?
That was back in 16.
It's just curiosity. Just let me know.
Okay, I will. I'll check.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Item 22. Discuss take action on Midland County Sheriff's Office Constable Civil Service Fee Schedule effective 101, 2018 through 1231, 2018.
Good morning. How y'all doing today?
Good morning.
I'm sorry, stuck with me, the sheriff and chief are at the National Sheriff's Conference right now. They're out of town. On this item, for the fee increase, Lieutenant Colston and the county attorney spoke earlier. There's some additional fees they'd like to place into this request, and we'd see if we can table it right now for a later date.
Okay, what are the additional fees you're looking at, Ken?
I feel.
Morning, Judge.
Not the increases, but the additional fees.
What the county attorney and I have been discussing is placing a hourly rate for the deputies when we go pick up prisoners and bring them back to Midland County to stand trial. In the statutes, it doesn't have anything. We would like, and Russell has checked this out thoroughly, we want to put an hourly fee to charge them to put on their amount so that they have to pay Midland County back for us having to go pick them up.
Okay. Russell, is this a case, because it's silent, that we could put it in there and find ourselves in a refund position?
Judge, we're still verifying that we're going to be able to do it, and that's why we want to table it.
Okay.
So if we determine that we cannot do it or that there's any risk, then we'll just come back with the same thing. But we have until, I think, what, September or something to get this, or August to get this.
Okay.
We have until the last commissioner's court meeting in September to get this passed.
So today is not the deadline, so we want to look at this a little bit closer.
Is that the only one you're talking about adding?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, you've asked for it to be tabled. Is there a motion from the court to table it? Motion to table.
Second?
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item 22 is tabled. Item 23, the sheriff has informed us to withdraw it, so we don't have 23. 24 is discuss take action on donation, Midland County Sheriff's Office donation account for busting for Badges Clay Shoot in the amount of $55,000.
Yes, sir. This is an event that actually, the planning starts in December with a bunch of, group of civilians and law enforcement on board. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work with this to put this event together. The clay shoot this year was on April 28th. We actually had so many people that wanted to come out and participate that we actually had to extend it a little bit that day for another round of shooting for them. The volunteers, it's massive, the companies that come in and donate their time, support us in it. Pioneer is one of our biggest supporters within this event. The funds are shared, the total funds are shared by four different agencies in this Permian Basin, this area, and this is our portion of that funds from the event. This is the, after everything's paid off and done, this is our portion of the event, and we would like that accepted.
Okay. And that money is just the general donation account. You can do whatever you want to with it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Heard the explanation. Are there questions or motions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second?
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and you'll take care of the thank you notes and all the letters and...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good. 25. Discuss and take action ratifying contract signed on June 16, 2017.
I'm going to ask if you can open your next one.
Yeah, okay, let's hold that a minute. We've got some fill-in work to do on that. Didn't show up. So let's go to 26. Discuss take action on RFP for oil and gas leasing designated county properties. Commissioner Ramsey?
We've had some inquiries to the leasing of some oil and gas assets that the county has, and we'd like to put it out there for bid.
Okay. And do you have, you do have a description in those properties, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So much like we did on the last one, if the court agrees, it'll be published and then results will be brought to the court for our approval or disapproval. Anybody have a motion to proceed?
Motion to...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd make the motion to go out for RFP on oil and gas leases.
Commissioner Ramsey, thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
Have a second?[1720.86] All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 27. Discuss take action on fleet accidents. Dwayne.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
This last, not the storm we had a couple days ago that did damage to the county, but the storm before that, back on the 14th, I believe it was, hail damage. We had two vehicles, 15519 and 75104, that were both significantly damaged by hail. They were over on the west side of the county at the time. Both of those have been taken to the body shop, gotten estimates on, and we're getting those fixed. Both of them, we only had three vehicles, those two plus one other that had windshields broken out of them. So we were real lucky with what we had on the hailstorm. So those two. And then on 69, we had unit 15477 with patrol that struck a pole on private property that was at fault. We fixed that in-house. And then I was just informed of an accident over the weekend. We're still investigating it with the same unit number. We're investigating that one. As soon as we get done with that, I'll bring it back to court.
Okay. Any questions of Dwayne? And/or the report. Okay. Motion to acknowledge his report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Madam Clerk, did you get those unit numbers for the minutes? Okay. Thank you. House 28. Take action acknowledging personnel memorandum.
Yes, sir. The apparel change summary should be in your packet. Just like to call your attention to the bottom of the page under other. The overtime that you see there for juvenile detention is paid for with state funds. There was one juvenile detention officer that was approved a discretionary increase from a 14-1 to a 14-3. Those don't have to come to court, just there for your acknowledgement. Also, there's overtime in the patrol section. That's the hours we pay them between 160 and 171. And then the PTI overtime for the DA's office paid for out of their pretrial intervention fund.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Motion, is there a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 29. Discuss take action on budget line item transfers. Did you get that number on the page? Thank you.
I do have some exceptions to bring to your attention this morning. On page 4 of 27, line item transfer number 6496, only because it is moving money out of the district clerk's office into the IT department for capital outlay less than $5,000. An explanation provided indicated it's for four desktop for criminal, civil, and family counters. On page 7 of 27, line item transfer 6539. It is moving money from the 318th District Court into the combined district courts. Coming out of office applies into publications for some publications that were needed within that department. And the last one to bring to your attention is on page 11 of 27, and it is line item transfer number 6544, moving funds from the salary lines, social security and retirement, into advertising legal notices in the human resources department. But since it is moving money out of salary lines, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Any questions on the line item transfers?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 30. Discuss take action on bills and wire transfers. Madam Monitor.
Yes, sir. I do have a wire transfer in the amount of $31 from the county clerks to pulled cash deposited in general pulled cash account in error. And I do have some exceptions to the bills also.
Really?
Yeah. Position Delta is the first invoice I wanted to discuss with you, and it has to do with 441st District Court. I believe they purchased ammunition without a purchase order. It indicates from Greg Travman in that department, evidently a purchase order was not created. After my conversation with you, this office is aware that a purchase order needs to be completed on these types of purchases. In the future, one will be completed, and Judge Satterwhite has been made aware, is what it indicated.
Okay.
I do have one for Sheriff Painter. It is in relation to the same item that I believe he asked us to skip, but he presented a bill to my department, and I'll just review it with you, and you let me know what I should do with it. It is for the purchase of two meals for DPS officers that flew him to Huntsville in the DPS airplane to hand-deliver a death warrant for the Clinton Lee Young case in prison as required by law, he indicates. So it was purchase of meals for non-county employees, and that's what he is seeking reimbursement. I know he asked for that agenda item to be tabled, but since something had been presented to me, I'm not sure if he wants this tabled completely or if the court wants to act on it.
I would encourage you to table it till we can visit with him, because the state pays for those lunches when they transport people.
Okay.
Or, let me correct myself. They used to pay for them. That could have changed.
All right. Then I will hold off on that one. I do have one for Bailey Lively. For $52, personally paid for Survey Monkey while attempting to turn to vendor. They're refusing to be a vendor, is what it indicates on here, but she paid for that Survey Monkey, I imagine for one of her classes.
Mm-hmm.
I do have two invoices for Reynolds Brothers, one in the amount of $381.06, one in the amount of $64.08. And it is having to do with CAD line work for plotter, something Xerox scan, I guess, some copies of some maps, and also the map tube. And it was one of the other items that was purchased. Explanation indicate there was no purchase order written for this because it was an emergency and cemetery needed them ASAP. So those are my exceptions this morning.
Okay.
If I could just relay the method...
Wait, did you get up there? Okay.
The sheriff did send me an email on his request, and then he asked that the request and the receipts be discarded. After consideration, he had changed his mind.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll point that to you. Perfect.
So on the one we said, hold on the bills. Veronica, that's your answer.
Sounds good. Will do.
Let's take them on.
Veronica, who is, or who or what is Logical Front LLC?
Logical Front LLC? I don't know, but I can find out for you.
$103,000. I was just curious what that, who that was.
Mike, you got something?
That's the vendor being used by Dell for the new battery backup system.
Okay.
They're the party that holds the actual contract.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on bills and wire transfers? Is there a motion?
Motion to pay all bills and wire transfers. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Veronica. And again, thanks to you and your staff on the excellent audit. 31.